We call to order our next budget workshop. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, this is the piece of the budget which is called the service expansion piece. You have the continuation budget which is simply continues the existing services that you have next year, exactly what you're doing this year. So, anything that's a change, whether it's a plus or a minus in services or programs, is put forward in the expansion budget. So, if someone has a new program they're proposing, or if someone is saying, "We'd like to reduce this program," that's where you would see this. Again, our continuation program is a continuation of the services that you are currently providing. Doesn't necessarily mean we're spending the same amount of money on it, but it's the same program, whatever it costs to do that same thing. So, these are newer, different items, and each of the department managers are here tonight to discuss those. From that perspective, it allows them to speak to you about that, answer any questions you may have about their request, and then it gives you the opportunity later to decide whether that's something you want to put on your priority. Just remember that none of these items on this sheet are funded. You would have to find revenue to either by cutting items in the continuation budget or by generating new revenue sources to fund these.
If you see something up here that you requested about, that's up here, and you want to pull it, now's the time to pull it up.
If it's something you'd like to pull?
Yeah. I mean, it's something that I asked about, and I see it's up here, and I no longer want it at this time.
Okay. Well, I mean, anytime, whenever we get to it, you can say, because we've got a couple already that have been pulled.
Okay.
So, I mean, you just let the chairman know, and however you want to do that.
All right.
So, I guess I'll start it out with the first one. This is the 2% cost of living adjustment. There is this on the general fund side, and as well on the water department side, because it is a separate fund, because you have employees there. This was a request that was brought forward. So, if you look at that, out of a $14.1 million budget, 2%, that's roughly $283,000.
How much?
Sir?
How much did you say?
$283,777. And the way the sheet is laid out on the front page, you'll see where it lists the department, the title of the expansion, what the estimated initial cost is, any revenue offset that may come out of it, and then what the net cost is, and then if there's an annual recurring expense. So, for an example, you have the detailed sheet where it'll show what the personnel operating capital costs are for that expansion, what the total expenditures are, and then any revenue offset that comes out of it. So, say you had a new position that someone was asking about. So, they would put in the personnel cost, all the personnel cost, any operational cost if they needed a new computer, whatever it was to fund that position and get them to do their job. So, you'd have the total there. And then, maybe part of their job was allowed for a revenue offset. Maybe it was a billing piece or something that brought in some revenue because you had that. Then, we would show that offset. Now, if there's a recurring piece that occurs year after year, we would also show that in that last column. So, you know that if this is like a new position, then you've got to fund it again next year. It's not just a one-time expenditure. So, that's why that column is there. And then, there's an explanation in the comments about it. So, it's to try to more clearly lay out and to show you, if you decide you want to do one of these, whether it's just a one-time expenditure, or whether it's a one-time and then continuing cost every year, so whether you're buying that cost on. So, again, this is the 2% related to general fund only. You've already seen the one the other night for the water fund, the same amount, and of course, these are recurring, so that would be that. So, that's the only one I have for you.
Finance?
The finance department has one expansion request for your consideration this evening. I am happy to announce that this expansion will not cost the county any additional funds. I have been able to demonstrate a way that we can pay for this and actually save the county $94 a year. I'm requesting that a vacant position, which is an administrative assistant two position, be reclassed as a staff accountant. I believe that the finance department's in desperate need of some additional accounting and technical expertise, and I've listed the proposed responsibilities of that new position on pages 170 and 171. And I also feel that hiring this position will allow the deputy finance director, myself, to focus on some very important projects that need to be done in the finance department, and those are listed on pages 171 and 172. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Well, actually, saving this $94?
A year.
Yes, sir.
We're great.
It's a savings.
That's right.
Thank you.
Need everybody else to follow the same pattern.
I was going to ask.
I need it.
She can answer, I don't worry. This is, this may be a little bit funny.
Okay.
If we allow you to do that, will you promise us that you're not going to leave in the next 12 months?
I don't have any intentions on leaving in the next 12 months. But, nobody knows what the future holds, either, right?
Good answer.
Human Resources.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The human resource request is to establish an employee's assistance program, and if you look on page 174, you'll see the scope of services provided. This program would provide confidential assistance to employees and management in working through life challenges that may affect their work performance. The company offers assessments, counseling, referrals, training for supervisors. It's also available to employees' family members. They produce a monthly newsletter for employees and supervisors. They have a 24-hour answering service and onsite counseling for traumatic events. The request is for $6,606 for our 328 current employees, and an additional $504 for our 27 water fund employees, and the total $7,110. And these would be self-referrals. The employees would seek out the assistance themselves, or either there could be a supervisor or manager referral.
Questions?
Just one note for the board on this. If you note on their scope of services, they do provide CISD, critical incident stress debriefing, in case there's a need for that. Currently, our fire, EMS, law enforcement, they do that. They have a special group that will come in and do that, especially for them. But, we do have agencies in the department or in the county that don't have that service available to them, and they would provide this service. I mean, and examples like DSS workers who may be dealing with a traumatic child issue or those kind of things that they have to deal with, health department, those folks who are exposed to traumatic events in their line of work, this allows for a CISD, which is a really good thing. You can ask any of the emergency responder folks what a benefit that is. Just want to make sure that was clear.
The cost actually includes four counseling sessions. If there's a need beyond that, there would be a referral, and the employee would handle it themselves.
Okay. Any further questions?
Has the county ever had this employee assistance program?
No, sir.
Never had?
No, sir. A lot of counties do.
Thank you, Ms. Christian.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from animal control?
I don't see Billy. I don't know whether he got hung up on a call or not, but I'll be glad to run his request for him.
Okay.
Obviously, this is a request for an additional field officer position. I think he's shown that based on their numbers, obviously, they've got some increasing calls. They're having a lot more complaints and investigations that they do, as well as the success of the animal shelter in moving animals out. That, everybody kind of forgets that when you become more successful in adopting animals out, there's more paperwork and more work that comes with that. And they have a lot of volunteers who are working hard to do that, but then there's also the piece that they have to pick up and coordinate with those folks. So, he's requesting that. That piece does include a vehicle, so that would be one of those one-time initial costs. So, you can certainly read through that after you have any questions on that. The second piece he's asked about is an electronic sign. I think you got some quotes on there for about $29,000, to put up an electronic sign out in front of the animal shelter to change out the sign that's existing, to hopefully provide for some additional information for the public as they go by and make it a little more attractive and try to drive some traffic there, as well as being able to, with the message boards, being able to change a little bit so they can advertise for their rabies clinics, when their adoption clinics, when those things are going on. So, you'll see that. He's done some work and actually got some quotes on it already, so.
Okay. Commissioner Booth?
Do they have any money in their budget, the freighters' cost for this sign?
No, sir. This would be something new that should have to.
Commissioner Buzio?
All we have is one quote.
It's a budgetary quote. It's just a budgetary quote. We didn't, for things like this, we didn't necessarily ask them to go out and get three. We asked them to get one budgetary quote, and then we know that's at least the number if it comes, and we would require more than that if you actually funded it.
Okay.
Then, we would go out and get.
So, if we approve it, then you'd want to get the three quotes?
Right, we would. We would follow our normal purchasing practices on that. This is more for a budgetary piece, so we would know that it wouldn't be any more than that.
Any questions? Soil and Water?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here this evening because Soil and Water has offered an expansion request for me. I went to my board in April with concerns about my job classification and salary. I was appointed department head for Soil and Water in 2006, and since that time, I have managed the office day-to-day. I have two employees that report to me. Both of those employees make more money than I do, and I went to Dolores, talked with her about it. She gave me some suggestions, did some checking, and told me that, after she did some checking as well, she thought that the job duties that I do would be more in line with the office manager position, which would move me from an administrative assistant one, salary grade 12, to an office manager salary grade 17. So, in your books, you will find a letter of support from my board. They told me they would back me in my request, and the expansion amount would be a total of $8,390. Does anybody have any questions on it?
How long have you been working at your current job?
I've been with Soil and Water since 2002, fourteen and a half years.
You're talking about what you're doing right now.
Since 2006, 10 years.
When did you become, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I know you stated, but when did you state that you became department head?
In 2006.
Okay.
That was it. Our original department head was our district conservationist with Natural Resources, but their agency and some other agencies decided that they could no longer manage district employees. So, it was at his recommendation, and then the board, and then the county manager at the time, that they appointed me as the department head. Thank you.
Any questions concerning this particular item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
We have the chairman of that board here. I wonder if Mr. Allen would like to make any comments?
I can just say that we support, and in this, we feel like that she's doing the administrative job that she runs the office. I mean, the supervisors look to her for everything, and so, I feel like she's been short-changed in the past, and at least we can bring her up to speed now. I told her a while ago, I said, "We could get a little bit dirty and ask for back pay." We won't do that. So, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I don't, I just want to allow you a chance.
Okay, well, the whole board unanimously is in favor of this request, and so, that's where we've got it. Thank you.
All right. There's another item, Beaver Management Assistant Program.
The Beaver Management, go ahead. You'll do a better job than I will.
What the county presently has is a Beaver Bounty Program, in which landowners register with us, hire their own trappers, and for every beaver tail that they bring us from their property, the county pays them $10. Mr. Alli-Good introduced to us the BMAP Program, Beaver Management Assistance Program through the state, which is something Beaufort County participated in many years ago. I think we actually stopped in 2003. BMAP is a program that the county would pay to the state $4,000 annually, and for that money, landowners would have the services of a state trapper to come to their property at $25 a site visit, I believe. And also, they would have access to somebody that could blow dams from these beavers at $125 per dam. The Beaver program that we've been participating in since 2004 is dwindling to just about nothing. We have little participation in it now, but the beavers are still there, and the landowners are still coming to us with complaints about the beavers. But, I think the money that they're getting as $10 reimbursement is nowhere near what they're having to pay a trapper to help them out. So, BMAP might be of more advantage to our landowners than what we have now.
Questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are most of the problems with the beavers in a drainage district, an existing drainage district?
They are everywhere.
Not necessarily always drainage. The drainage districts usually handles the Beaver problem.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. And we just done a stream debris removal over the top of the interstate, and the beavers have been a pain in the back. Because every time the guys would get in there to get something out, they'd have to tear the dam down so they could determine why it had to be removed. And the beavers are a pain over there.
Any other questions? We thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Office. Strike, you're good to go.
That's the item, that I wanted to request that we pull.
Okay.
And the reason is, is I was, I had done some inquiry with chief about it a while back, but it just wasn't for their department. I wanted for all county vehicles. And at this time, I don't think that we can afford to do it. That's the engine devices. Yeah, yeah, I'd pull that if I could.
Okay.
For the study. I don't want it to be taken completely off for the study.
Glad you clarified.
Yeah.
All right.
Next year, maybe.
Planning? He's not here.
Let me see, Seth, this is the Camel Land Use Update that he talked about in his budget presentation the other night. If you flip over on that page, it is, oh, shoot, let me get all the way back. It is on page 206. This is to hire a consulting firm to come in and develop a county-wide plan. I think he described that during his budget presentation, his department presentation. If there are any questions regarding that, I'll try to answer them, or.
Questions from Commissioners?
Is this the one, excuse me, an emergency management?
This is out of planning. It's the Camel piece.
Page 206.
It's the one that y'all talked about the other night. You asked him a couple of questions about the other night. The last step is done in year 2006. Yes, sir.
Cooperative Extension.
The Extension Office here in Beaufort County is blessed. We are one of only four counties in the state to have two 4H agents. And you know, 4H is big all over the state. Well, the success of these two programs has put a strain on our capability to move kids around from point A to point B. As I said, we have two programs, a traditional 4H program, Louise Hensley heads that up. I have Erin Massey with me. She's our other 4H agent, and she is funded partially through NCANT State University. Her program is targeted for, towards limited resource youth, and it's very successful and growing by leaps and bounds. She is having to use her personal vehicle to move kids around to meetings, to competitions, to other 4H-related events. So, we've approached the county to ask for some help in, with transportation to move these kids around. Brian, I'm going to rely on you for the specifics if you want to do that at this time. We have worked with some other funding partners to come up with some of the money for this project, and we've been very successful with that, so. Yeah, and I think I shared that with y'all previously. Ray McKeaton with Potash, I had a conversation with him. He actually called me, and then I ran into him at an event, and he said that they were willing to co-share with you on that, that they were very supportive of the 4H program, thought that it did a great job, and that they wanted to support that, and the way they would support that is they would pay half the cost of a van, or of two vans, or of three vans, or whatever it was you needed van-wise. And I kind of laughed at him, and I said, "Well, can you, if we put Sheriff's Office lights on them, will you still buy them?" And he said, "Probably not." But, he said that they would, if two of them were needed, they would fund half that cost if the county would match them on it. If only one was needed, they would fund that, but they were willing to fund as many of those vans as 4H needed to adequately handle that program. And safely. And that's one of the issues for us was the safety. Again, Erin's using her own personal vehicle, and the liability issues revolving around that are extreme, and so, that's why we were kind of going down this road to try to get some help in that regard.
So, the real number is not 60, but actually 30?
The real number we've shown is about 32, because we said 30, and then about $2,000 a year ongoing for fuel and things like that, so that's the recurring cost on it.
Commissioner Green?
How many children are involved in these programs?
I'm going to get Erin Massey to come up. She can answer that question way better than I can.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have 294-ish club members that are very active youth in the county right now. We also have kids that come in and out and float, but these are the kids that are going to club meetings at least once a month, or more often than that. And like Rod was saying, I serve primary limited resource youth, so when I drive up to someone's house and pick up my kids to carry them to their club meetings or whatever they want to participate in, I am constantly having to turn away other kids because I don't have room in my car. And not to mention just the liability of it all, and my husband's an insurance adjuster, so you know how that suits with him, but, you know, we do a great job serving the youth here. We have a booming program. We are the number one county is serving limited resource youth in the state, so.
Yes, her program is highlighted by NCANT State University as a model for what she's doing across the state. It's very important.
But, we do need transportation to get these youth to places they need to go, and one van will, you know, a 15-passenger van, if you're going on a trip, it really limits you to about 10 youth, because you're going to have to have luggage in the back for your trip. So, we were looking at kids we thought would be going to North Carolina 4H Congress, which is a big leadership event that we have and host every year in Raleigh. We're looking at probably 14 kids that are wanting to go this year, so I'm going to have to tell some kids no. And when I rent my 15-passenger van, that usually runs about $800 when we get insurance and everything on that 15-passenger van, I just have to watch my budget. I can't get two of those vans, so I'm having to turn kids down. And I hate that because we are a growing program, and these kids deserve it because they're putting their work in. These are kids that are doing oral presentations, showing livestock, coming to every meeting, volunteering, doing community service. They are putting the work in, and they deserve to be a part of the program.
One more question. If this van does come to light, how do y'all cover your insurances and things of that nature?
We've had so many discussions about that, I can't even remember where we landed on that. We're going to have county, this van was going to be licensed by the county, so we have county's issue.
The other thing is, if, let's say if the county did one, and Potash did one, so then to maximize your efficiency as far as taking children, you would need to either invest in or rent a, what you call those cupboard trailers, that you could put all their luggage in. I can't think of what you would put it exactly.
Yeah, cupboard trailer.
U-Haul, yeah, U-Haul.
That's typically what happens, is they'll use their vehicles, and then one of them will pull a trailer. We've been borrowing one, but we've actually almost purchased one. Our church was selling one, so I've managed to take some money that I had in my ag program and purchase this trailer for our use, so we'll actually have that.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Booth?
I'm fine with it. All I can say to do a very, very good project, and every year that the kids have been to our convention, they have been rolling all the kids.
Could these be used for other county activities?
Yeah, we felt like one would be used almost every day by Erin, by herself, and certainly Louise would as well. The other one, if we were fortunate enough to get two, we had talked about making that one available for other departments, and periodically, when they need that, they can sign it out or whatever, so absolutely.
Okay.
And I would say that's the case for both of them, but I just feel like one of them will be available most of the time.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, both.
Public Buildings. You have three items.
Good evening, Commissioners. My first expansion item, I realize is not a very popular item this budget year, but it is a request for a new position for the department. We've had numerous conversations in this meeting, as well as outside. We've seen pictures, we've all walked around our buildings, and we've all, you know, everyone knows that county buildings need improvement, and we've taken great strides in doing that. Just as a little history, I've been with the county three years. When I started with the county, the maintenance department consisted of 40% of my time and an administrative assistant. Year after that, we received fundings for a maintenance coordinator, so now our entire maintenance department is 40% of my time, 100% of a maintenance coordinator, and then an admin assistant to manage all the contracts. It's very limiting as far as the actual work that we are able to get done on a day-to-day basis, even if the funds are available and you have been very generous. basis, even if the funds are available, and you have been very generous in the past approving funds to complete projects. Without having time to supervise those projects, sometimes you're throwing good money after bad. And Les Woolard, who's the maintenance coordinator, and I have chosen not to do that. I would rather delay a project than to just hire a contractor and not be able to supervise that contract. Because then, also, you're worried about change order, scope of work, things, scope creep, but you're also worried about a contractor being in a county building during business hours, interacting with the public, and they really, you really need to have close supervision. And I'm not speaking bad about different contractors, or any one particular contractor. It's just a fact that there needs to be a county employee there, making sure that things are going as they should go. Again, keeping in mind the number of county buildings we have, small items, stopped-up toilet, overrunning sink. I mean, I'm responding to calls like that with a mop. I will say that since Les has been here, I've not done that. But Les has been in jail for the past two and a half weeks installing new plumbing controls.
What do you do?
I know how to use a mop. So, you know, you do what has to be done, but it's, I know decisions were made back in 2007, 2008 to cut the maintenance department, and those were made for good reasons, but I'm asking that we slowly add back to the department, hopefully, to find the equilibrium where it works best, and we're getting the most bang for our buck. The position that I have requested, as this is based upon conversations with Dolores and other people, it would be some, the salary range would be somewhere around $30,000 plus benefits, and then also I'm asking for a vehicle for the person to be able to travel around the different, to the different buildings.
Okay, questions from commissioners?
In the narrative, it says that we own 18 buildings. Does that include the First Bank Building?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions on this particular item? Okay, your next item.
The next item is, the reason this is listed as a continue, as, excuse me, as an expansion item is just because of the large amount of money. This is a renovation of the courthouse, which based upon the last meeting, you were shown some pictures showing the condition of the courthouse. There's been much conversation between the residents of the courthouse, I'll say, the people that work in the courthouse each and every day, along with myself, and along with the county manager regarding the courthouse. And I believe everyone would like to improve the look of the courthouse for the county residents. And looking at that, there's an estimate of about $250,000 to do a renovation of the interior of the courthouse. I'm not asking to do that all in one year. I have a three-phase plan, basically spread out over the next three years. The first phase I was asking for this year is a capital outlay of $100,000, and then plus some engineering fees. That would be a total of $107,500. And then each, for two budget years after that, it would be $75,000. The scope of the work has not completely been finalized at this point. We would work with the people that work in the courthouse, working with the court systems, the register of deeds, and the clerk of court to determine some priorities. But I would like to, obviously, we've talked about starting with the roof, and then starting with lighting, and then kind of coming down. Looking to do things that would improve efficiency of the courthouse, overall energy efficiency. You see, the windows that are in the courthouse are still the original windows from 1970. The lighting is still the original lighting from 1970. Some of the ceiling tile is still the original ceiling tile. Some of the paint on the walls is some of the original paint. So we're just looking, looking to do that, and again, being considerate of the county's finances, looking at doing that in a three-year plan.
Questions? Commissioner Brin.
$7,500 for engineering fees.
Yes, sir. Initially, part of that is regarding a lighting study, and then also, we're anticipating some possible structural issues, and that's just because the way the form is laid out with capital outlay versus operational, and engineering fees don't qualify as capital outlay, so I had to just come out with that number.
Is it for the roof too?
No, the roof is listed in the court facilities. And that's just not, that's not a hard number. That's just a number that may be, may be needed at some point during the overall renovation.
So you may not need it at all? Bring that engineer in, you're going to need it.
Any further questions? All right, your next item.
My final item is also dealing with the courthouse, and again, just because of the dollar value, it's listed as an expansion item. This is dealing with the renovation of the magistrate's office. The clerk of court, district court judge, and county manager and myself met, and along with the chief magistrate, and they expressed to us some concerns that they have regarding the overall efficiency of the office, as well as safety and health concerns regarding that office. It is located in the basement of the courthouse, and there's only one entrance into that office. And they are asking to put in a second door to allow them to have a safe haven if something were to take place, that they would have a place to exit. And they're also asking, as part of overall, the security measures going on, to be able to redesign to give them additional space. Right now, if you go in there, when the officers come in, and Chief Deputy Rose may be able to speak a little better on this, but it's a very small space that's there where the officers are able to put suspects as they're waiting to see the magistrate. Also, oftentimes, it also gets very congested with family members that are there, either with the suspects, or people that are there for other cases, that are there to swear out a warrant on people. It's just a very congested area, and there's not a lot of separation for safety. The magistrates, when they come in, they come in through the same door with the people. So this is something that was brought to us and asked us to consider it. Therefore, I am presenting it to you and asking you to consider it.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waters.
Do you mind stepping up there?
Sorry, I put you in that one.
The, two questions. The consultants that were here, I'm sure that probably made some comments as they went through that area. Does the changes that's being proposed, does that pretty well fall in line with maybe some of the comments the two consultants had?
I don't believe that their assessment's going to get into the, into the physical plant of how things go. I think that, at least at this point, it's just going to be of an overall synopsis of what we have and where we need to go. So I don't think it's going to drill down into those, those specific details.
The second question relates to the possibility of trying to redo some other areas there, like the storage area for the register of deeds. If that was to move to another location, would that change the potential to make some different changes in the, this office?
There's a, there's actually quite a bit of space on that floor that is, is, could be available to be used, you know, but construction would have to be involved. Walls would have to be removed. I mean, you would actually have to remake the space that's down there. Some of the issues that have been spoken about recently is, you know, when it comes to taking prisoners down, you've got somebody in custody, and you're in a public area, then you go to a secured area, then you go back to a public area before you deposit them into the jail. You know, and those, and most of the modern facilities, once you get to the point where you're at the magistrate, you're in a secured area, then you never take the inmate back to an unsecured area. So those are things with the space that we have. Unless we do completely remake the basement level, then we're probably not going to be able to get to all that point, but there are things that we can do, and that can be changed, to make it safer for everybody that's down there.
To me, my concern is if you spend $55,000, and then the decision is made to relocate these other two storage areas, the clerk of court and register of deeds, that's 55 that could be used to better redesign that whole area in the basement. You've got something to say, Ed?
No, I'm just grinning.
Grinning? I've been told the register of deeds office does not have to be in the building. So I mean, they could be relocated. And I've been told the clerk has to stay in the building. If you move the register of deeds out, then you've got space for the, for the files that the clerk has down in that basement area, could be moved upstairs.
Sure, sure.
And I've heard estimates of 40% of the space down there. I don't believe it's quite that big. But it's something that I think we ought to take a look at if we're going to start trying to redo.
Yeah, I think, and I may be stepping on Christina's toes on this one, but I think with the plans that they're moving on, we're to try to keep as much of what they have in the plans and working now, and just try to make that safer. And what you're speaking of, which I think is very doable in the area, and you could probably use the unused space to do it, it would just, it would go away from that. Where the magistrate's office is now, you would completely move it from where it is and change the whole structure of that basement floor. I think as far as space goes, there's a lot of space down there, but I haven't even, even thought about or have seen plans that would go to answer the questions that you're asking. But there's a lot of unused space down there now, without, with everybody still being in the building. It's just what can construction do to make it better?
Commissioner Booth.
Chief, in this, for you and Christina, you stated that move the magistrate's office or get them into a secured area. If that's the case, you're going to have to also move the intoxicator room, aren't you? If that's the case, you would have to move the tox room, right?
The intoxicator room.
Is it from the design that it is now?
Not necessarily. You know, with, right now, we're within the confines of statutes on what we have to have and the proximity.
I understand that, what you was talking about, once you get them, once you get them to the magistrate, and most of the time, when the guy leaves the tox room, we go to the magistrate, he don't come back this way. He goes with y'all.
Well, right now...
But you bringing him back in public. Am I correct?
Yes, absolutely. And right now, I mean, right now, the entire process is in the public.
Nothing wrong with the tox room. I'm just talking about you trying to, once you get them in a secured area. And if, if, if you got a guy in the tox room, when you carry him to the magistrate, nine times out of 10, when you carry him to the magistrate, he ain't coming back.
No, I agree. I agree. And right now, and I think even with the plans that we have right now, it's still going to be that you're going to have to leave...
I just wanted to clarify that.
...the magistrate's office and still go back into the public before they get into the detention center.
That's right.
Yes, the plan that's presented is, and Commissioner Waters, I agree 100%. There, there is space that's in the courthouse, that's in the basement, and I think that's, you know, there's been talk about having a space planning study to look at that, because it's very difficult, especially in a building such as the courthouse, where you have different departments that are attempting to work together, that are, do not have the same, they're not all under the realm of the county manager or under your realm. So it's, it's difficult to do that, and that's something, you can have studies, and you can have studies, but again, if you don't know what your, what your overall goal is, it's difficult to do that. And that's why this is being presented as, again, this was what the magistrates asked for, suggested, and, you know, this is more of a temporary type thing, not a long-term, because long-term planning takes planning, and that's something that has not been done.
Would the study that you, that you've got in this expansion?
Not in the expansion. It's actually in the continuation.
Okay. Would that, would that address the basement in the courthouse?
If there's enough money to go that far. I mean, our goal, we put in, we recommended $50,000 to look at as many of the buildings as we could look at. I mean, the big piece was, you've got to figure out what you're going to do with this, this First Bank Building, and then look at, you know, this building, how are things going to change, obviously, from there to here? Are there issues, you know, across the realm of all of our departments? I don't know how much $50,000 is going to get, but if you want to focus on those, we can certainly focus on those.
Thanks.
But there's a lot to look at.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're going to move the registered deeds, you're going to have to figure out where you're going to move them.
You're right.
You're going to move them. I mean, there's, there's lots of scenarios, but each scenario you're talking about is going to cost a lot of money.
Yep.
If you move the registered deeds into this building, and move this building over there to the First Bank Building, then you're talking renovation, lots and lots of money for renovations. That's a, I mean, it becomes a domino effect there, and each domino is probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I hope you're all doing well. First thing I want to do was to bring you the information that was asked of me last week about Stacey Harris's award. I did want to bring some recognition to that. That's the Trenton Davis Award, which is for environmental health efforts in the field of environmental health, recognized, recognizing what he did for the Eastern District, North Carolina Public Health Association. So that was asked of me last week, so I wanted to start with that. First thing I wanted to do is remind you, we had the retreat, and I presented a bunch of health data at that time, and during that time, I was pointing out to you some of the factors, such as that we rank 81st, so in the lower tier, it comes to health conditions, health factors. Most of those health factors we're talking about are obesity, smoking, substance abuse. Those kind of health factors rank a very low in the state. And so I told you, at that time, I was going to ask you to try to get a health educator. So that's what I'm here to ask you for, is a health educator. What I have in the Health Department right now is a third of a health educator in Kimberly Matthews, and half of another health educator in Janelle Lewis. So both of them have other jobs that keep them busy, so they can't concentrate a lot on health education. And so that's all I have. One of the things that I want the health educator to do is to recruit into some billable activities. The reason, we're starting up like the diabetes self-management class, though. By having a health educator out in the community, they'll be able to bring folks in to the program itself. So that may offset some of the cost here. Some other programs I want them to recruit into, tobacco cessation, diabetes prevention program, medical nutrition therapy. So these are all programs that they can bring them into. I need a stronger presence in the community, and that's involved in health fairs, involved in working with organizations such as churches and businesses, so I can expand that capability within the Health Department. Collaborative efforts, such as with the BC 360, working on task forces right now. What I have, the two that I do have right now, they're not full persons, but they're working in behavior health task force right now to address behavior health issues, literacy, homelessness, and mortality. So these are all the types of issues that are in our county that I'm trying to get us more involved in, and really, when it comes down to it, it's a lot of chronic disease. We're very good in there right now with, comes to maternal health, family planning, communicable diseases, environmental health stuff, but we need to get out there and start addressing obesity, substance abuse, tobacco use, diabetes, heart disease, stroke, which are all factors I need to get in there. So a couple of other factors, so I am asking for the health educator specialists. Two factors that I want to bring up to you is that this year's budget, I cut back $61,000 from last year's approved budget, so this would bring me not even back up to what it was last year, as far as that budget goes. And the other thing is, I hope to make this a grant-funded position over the years. Once I have the security of that person, then I can go out and seek grants that address tobacco use, I can find grants that address substance abuse, and I can find grants that address diabetes, and bring them into the county, and then that would be the person that would be the program director for these activities. So that's why I'm asking for this.
Questions from commissioners?
On a scale of 1 to 10, how important is this guy, or woman?
Eight and a half, nine and a half.
Why don't you just go ahead and say 10?
Well, I mean, these are the conditions in our county that I need to address, and so it's based off of a need to address those issues. You know, and like I said, I have... so it's based off of a need to address those issues, you know, and like I said, I have one-third of a person and half of a person to do it right now. That's it.
Thank you. Department of Social Services.
As you recall, during our budget retreat, we talked a lot about our income maintenance workers, so I'm here tonight again to request one income maintenance position. As you re, um, remembered, we talked a lot about Medicaid, the Medicaid and the food nutrition caseloads have increased by 12.9% and 62% since 2008. Last year, we requested three positions, and we got two of those positions. And what we're asking again, based on the documentation and the discussion that we've had, is for the other position. One of the things I think that's, that's pretty important for you guys to know is that last year, in additional revenue just from our Medicaid, you remember, we, in the past, we've gotten 50% reimbursement for Medicaid, it's 50/50. The feds changed it, so now we get 75/25. So, based on our projections, last year, we got over $342,000 in additional revenue, and that was to pay for infrastructure for these income maintenance positions. This year, we're projecting to, uh, for increased revenue over $360,000. What the piece that goes with that is that we're getting, our state auditor is saying now that they're going to come to counties and say, what are you doing with that additional revenue? And we have some county DSSs now that are undergoing their single audit, and one of the questions they're being asked is, what have you done with your additional Medicaid revenue? What, what we've done in Beaufort County is we have what's known as universal workers. So, our workers do food nutrition, they do Medicaid. So, with having that structure, all of our income maintenance workers can draw down the, that 75/25 match, which is real critical. But we are going to be asked, you know, what have we done with that revenue? So, we've been, we've gone through our expenditures to say, we can pretty much say that these things contributed to the Medicaid, but right now, we cannot come up with this amount of dollars to say that we've improved our struc, our infrastructure. Last year, we had numbers that would show that we probably could have used six, and you, six new employees, and I think most of you were at the presentation we did, but what we asked for, we said we needed three, and that was, three was really what we needed. A lot of that has to do with the Affordable Care Act and NCFAST. NCFAST, from what we're under, still has glitches in the past, what would have taken 10 minutes now, takes an hour to do. So, we're not just talking the caseloads that I told you about earlier, we're talking about workload, and those are two different things because one case several years ago, the, the amount of time it takes is real different from what we're talking about now. So, what we're asking for is that the, the income maintenance worker, because the other piece that you need to know is that in the past, what we, the reason we didn't ask for six is because we've maximized our technology, we're paperless, we, we're not like a lot of counties, we don't have to go down the hall, look for paper, look for files, and we've continued to be universal where one person sees the same person, so you don't have to tell the story more than once, you don't have to go see someone for food nutrition and then go see someone for Medicaid, you talk, you see that one person. And we're, as we talked about in our retreat, we're organized by triage, research, and applications, so it, it, for one thing, it's a better experience for our customers, but it also is much more efficient. It means our, our employees have to learn more programs, but it means that, that we're more efficient. But I think the biggest thing that's helped us is our technology, and we've continued to maximize that. And one of the things that happened this year, we've used temporary employees because we thought, we were hoping that the problems with NCFAST would get better. They've not gotten better, and the, our federal partners has clarified with North Carolina that you cannot, cannot use temporary employees. You must have someone that's what we call merit-based, so it must be a, it must be an employee of Department of Social Services. And right now, we're right on the edge, our county manager gets reports every week, so we get reports every day and every week, and the feds are saying that if North Carolina does not comply with 95% timeliness in process, and you, we will lose our, our administrative dollars to pay for food nutrition, and the Medicaid timeliness is also a problem. So, at, at the North Carolina level, we're under a lot of scrutiny. Beaufort County is making, we are meeting our mandates, but we're meeting it with overtime and a lot of hard work, but if we have a vacancy, we're in trouble.
Let me ask you this question. As far as this position, are there any state or federal dollars attached? I, I heard you say about the reimbursement. What I'm saying is, yes, straight up personnel-wise, are there any federal or state dollars that are allocated for this position?
Yes, we, we're looking at, we project the position with all the operational expenses would be $48,259. We have revenue to offset, it would be $26,792 for cost at the county to $21,000, that's on page 219.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, your next one.
The, we've, we had several that we've, and we still think that they're important, but based on what you're telling us, where we are with our budget, we're willing to try to maximize what folks we have use overtime. So, we pulled all of our expansion items except for three. We think the social work position is still critical to us. We, we're looking at ways that we can make it for another year, but, but we, the likelihood we're understanding of that being funded is not very high, but we, that would be our, one what we would still say is real important for us because right now, there's some changes happen at the state level with the interpretation of how we use what we call a safety resource if a child's found unsafe. In the past, we've not had to, we've given families an opportunity to work things out, and we've not filed petitions. There's some interpretation about due process and the fact that even though we feel that we've, that we're meeting the requirements for due process, we may be filing more petitions and, which may mean that we will have to have more oversight on our kinship providers, which is where the children would stay anyway. So, we're still saying that the social work position is important, but realizing that we're in a, a tough times right now with our deficit, so we'd like for you to keep it in mind, but not, but saying that we'll try to manage for another year.
So, so what, what three?
Okay, then the, the second one is actually, I don't, is on page 228.
Page what?
Page 228 in your book.
Okay.
That's the custodian housekeeper position, and we don't really, it's not an increase in county dollars. That would, we would see that as a, a transfer in dollars from Christina's budget because right now, that is a contracted.
Okay.
And right now, the, the DSS portion of that contract is $49,126, and, and what we're, the, the total cost and what you see on page 229 is showing 28, 28,000, and what we're, we've recalculated that, and the county cost is $26,534 with a revenue to offset, but keep in mind, this, these dollars are already in the county budget. We're just asking that DSS have control of the person that's providing custodial service in our building just because of the high volume of, of traffic we have, and, and we feel that the current contract's not meeting our needs.
So, this really not an expansion item? It's going to cost us nothing...
It's not going to cost anything.
As far as expansion dollars is concerned?
It's, it's considered expansion, but what we're asking for is moving it from the...
Yeah, originally, when we had this discussion, we weren't sure what those numbers were, and I guess if only y'all got together on those numbers now.
Yeah, we found, which is recently...
So, we can remove this from the expansion budget?
You could. If, if, if the numbers I just heard are right, then we would do that anyway.
You want to look into that, and if it's so, tell us tomorrow night? If you have something, Commissioner Booth?
I was going to tell you back on what Mr. Belcher said, the same thing, if that was covered, this person would be at your, your facilities eight hours a day, instead of coming in from five to y'all leave, or whatever it is, I mean, you know, I mean, they will come, come in, they will answer directly to y'all.
And we would be able to say, this is what we need done, we need playroom sanitation, we need...
Okay. Any other questions about that? What's your, what is your other one?
And the last one is on page 235. It's a, this is a reclass from administrative assistant two to administrative assistant three, and at a total cost for $2,338 for the county, since we have $1,012,000 revenue to offset the cost. Based on, as you know, we're under office of state personnel as, the types of duties we can assign folks without them being working outside of class. This is the position that actually supports myself, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the management team. We have only one person, and we have one person that supports our attorney, but the types of things that we're asking them to do, if we continue asking them to do it, at the percentage of time, they will be working outside their classification, and we're asking for that position to be reclassified.
But that's, that's fully funded by Fed and state money anyway.
Well, it's, the, the amount of, the amount that I've given you would be the county dollars on page 236. So, you, we do have money to offset that.
Did it offset the county dollar?
We had, the, the total expenditures is $3,468.
We're showing in our budget that, that the expansion on it, the amount that, that we would have to pay is $2,348.
That's correct.
And so, that, that is an expansion item, $2,348.
Yes.
And understand, and understand, you're under state personnel, are they requiring you to reclassify this position?
If the person, if the person is doing the duties that we need for them to do, they would be working outside their class, which is not, is, which we're not supposed to do.
Well, I, I know we're not supposed to do, but we just had a young lady that done it for five years.
I know.
But, and I was wondering, did the SPA require you to reclassify this?
What they're saying to us now, they've not, they've been understaffed at the, at the state level because they weren't sure how things were going to fall out with local government, so they're staffing back up now, and so what we're, what we're understanding, that's one of the areas that they will be providing more scrutiny, is to make sure that, that our, at the county level, that we are, we have people in the proper classification.
Is that part of the state office's trip down here?
Uh, not necessarily, that's, but, that first one is the one that, that does worry me.
I got you.
Any other questions? Thank you. That moves us all the way down to outside agencies, doesn't it?
It does.
We don't have anyone here for that.
That's right. I wasn't aware we were pulling as many as we were pulling tonight, so you have outside agencies scheduled to come in tomorrow night and do their presentation to you.
Some of them in here, you can do them in line.
Billy's here too, I mean, he just definitely, he came in, if there's any additional questions you may have on the animal control side.
Were there any?
I don't have any.
Okay, we're good. Well, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Booth, there's some of the outside agencies that, there's no need in wasting their time coming. And I don't, I don't mean to, to say that to be, to be funny, but, I mean, some of these requests, we know for a fact, we simply cannot do. But everybody's entitled to their minutes before, so we'll, we'll, we'll just let them come.
That's it?
I believe that's it for the evening. We'll adjourn until 5:30 tomorrow. We'll adjourn.